Miss Heather Meadows.
Well, I need to talk to Lance. Oh, I would say Lance. Lance and I actually talked about it on the way down to see what did you grant. A couple of questions asked. Can you check on? Hang on, how long ago?
We did.
He's got this going. He wants to know why nobody else is going.
Okay. Are you ready, Keith?
Yeah.
So, I've got a couple of things. First of all, Heather Meadows with Peterson Pipeline. Lance, could you come up and be part of this discussion and kind of help us understand a couple of things? One more call. You got it on there. I'm not sure what he's out of what his questions are.
I'll just tell you, I've got a couple of different calls and been copied on correspondence going back and forth between the developer and the water company. And I don't know that we'll be able to address this issue specifically, but for future purposes, I'm wondering if the council ought to come up with a position on what's required for subdivision development in terms of water connection requirements. Because the fact that a fire hydrant is within a certain proximity to a proposed subdivision doesn't get me all the way there if there's no right to the people in that subdivision to utilize water from that water system. I'm sure in an emergency, the fire truck will just hook up and start using the water, but I don't think from a development perspective, we ought to be authorizing that directly or indirectly. And so, I don't know if there's an official position. I didn't want to take, and that's my opinion. I wanted to bring raise it for the council and see what the other perspectives were and whether we needed to put some clarification in our ordinance so that this doesn't happen again.
So Lance, what is the ordinance for fire protection?
The subdivision requires that that be in place.
That fire protection be in place. And that can look like?
That can look like a lot of things. We defer that to the fire marshal to make that determination. So depending on the subdivision or the individual building permit, they can do a lot of different things. There's a lot of ways you can get at that. Usually for the subdivision, that's, you know, your, I mean, the typical subdivision is you're putting in the public improvements, the water system that's going to be served year-round, and so that's connected to the hydrant. With the smaller lots, there's other alternatives that are allowed per the, I'm speaking of, for the fire code. So they have the latitude to make that determination for those other areas. But code, subdivision ordinance requires it.
It requires some form of fire.
Some form of fire.
So, does it differentiate between in and outside of the urban wild land interface? Or is it just fire protection regardless of whether you're?
I think it's fire protection. I think, I think there's different standards for in and out.
Okay.
Chuck, I'm putting you on the spot. Could you bring the chair up? So, so some of the questions that's been drawn is, and Lance and I talked about it on the way down, this is all I can back. So, it's my understanding, help me understand, if these people are all on wells, and there's a fire hydrant right here, and there's a fire on one of these lots. What's the governing rule for you guys hooking onto that sucker and fighting that fire?
The rule versus what we would do.
Well, we're trying, we're trying to solve a problem because?
I'm familiar with this.
Yes.
And there are hydrants in here with the system that was set up.
Are they charged?
They are not at this time.
So are they covered?
They're supposed to be black bagged, so that, and the developer is assured of that. And the last time that Dave was over there, they were indeed covered. Black bag means that it's out of service, and so that way we know not to use it. There is another hydrant out here on the highway, and we thought, well, that would satisfy, satisfy the need to be able to provide fire protection in the cul-de-sac area there. But the water company out here is telling us that that is not water that's usable for us, and that that system is not part of it. I mean, the development is not part of the system.
Well, my question is, yes, that hydrant is here, belongs to Peterson Pipeline. In the case of a fire emergency, are there state, federal rules that says you can hook onto that sucker and use it regardless if you are a part of this system at all?
I couldn't answer that without doing some research on the rule or the law on that. It is a different system in there, and the developer's not a part of that system at this time. So I think there's arguments on both sides, and I'm happy to look that up.
If you show up to a fire on lot number two, what are you going to do?
I'm going to look at that hydrant and put fire out.
And deal with the legalities of it later.
Let the property owners deal with that.
And that's what I would expect to have happen. But when we go through a development approval process, if, and divorce it from this particular one, let's just say it looked like this.
No, Lance and I talked about it. You got one up in Milton?
Yeah, and they come in and they say, well, we don't want to put it, we want to do wells, we don't want to connect to their system, and this adjoining property owner has fire protection available to them, we want to rely upon that. My perspective is, no, that's not permissible. I mean, it's not any more permissible than, I don't want to put in my own septic system, I'm just going to drain over into my neighbors. Or, you know, I don't have culinary water, but they'll let me use their hose. To me, it's just not acceptable. So, if there's a lack of clarification for the people who are approving this, I would say, no, you either come up with your own system, I don't care what it is, you have to meet the requirement to have fire protection, but you can't just assume that the fire company will either legally or illegally connect to the fire hydrant down the street with respect to which you have no right.
Correct, and we're requiring the developer to provide.
This plat was approved with, they will either hook up to Peterson Pipeline water and use that for the water and fire hydrants, or they will develop their own system and have water or fire hydrants planned through their own separate well system. The timing's a little off because, and that's why there's, it wasn't just directly into Peterson Pipeline.
So?
But there's a little bit of a timing issue there. But they have the option to do either or, and that's all I'm asking for, is pick one and do it.
So did you have a look at, like Johnson's, that's out in the middle of Milton?
Yeah.
How did they, did you have a chance to look and see how they?
I couldn't find any.
Answered that?
Yeah, I couldn't find anything in the, in the plats and all that about what the fire requirement was going to be and how they happened, so. So I don't know the details of how that plat was approved. You know, I don't think it was as clear-cut as Heather Meadows.
On this, the developer has suggested a couple of ideas that weren't acceptable to us for water supply, but it, yeah, he has everything, he just needs to develop his water supply, which is right around 100,000 gallons. It's a pretty significant.
It's a significant requirement.
Fire flow. Yeah, you have to have 1,000 gallons under for two hours.
So, now let's talk about this specifically then. Are they seeking to pull permits to build structures here?
They've been issued two building permits.
And is there a hold on further until they come up, pick either one or the other?
That is what I would like to do, and that's what I've done to date. We've been trying to get this resolved. I think Peterson Pipeline and the developer have been trying to figure it out, but, and at some point, it's, they're going to get denied an inspection because we're not going to let them keep going forward until it is resolved.
Do the two they have have certificates of occupancy already?
No.
They're still.
So, and that's kind of a critical time to have fire protection, frankly, during construction.
I think we need to stop immediately. That's my.
Stop work order?
I don't see how they proceed to continue to work on it if they haven't met the requirements in the plan.
Is your policy to have fire protection before construction begins, or is there such a definition?
I think, John, correct me on this, I think it would be part of the improvements that would be in place before we would do that.
Then I would say stop work orders and get the fire protection in place because they're not meeting the county ordinance.
What do you do if there's a fire during construction and they don't have fire suppression?
They're going to do what Chuck said, they're going to connect to it, and they're going to do it, and then they're going to have to deal with the.
Consept by that. But they had to follow that with that. And I think if that's the ordinance and that's what the expectation is, then I don't think it's a question. You stop, finish the subdivision process that you're supposed to finish before, and then move forward from that.
So what was his, Miss Heather, besides Peterson Pipeline, what was his other, his fire protections on the wells? How was he addressing that one?
Well, he was going to, he was going to go forward with his own well and charge the hydrants with that. Provide the well and use that system to, he was going to use an independent small system. He would use his own well to charge the fire hydrants.
How does he prove up a storage requirement?
Yeah, it doesn't provide the.
No, we haven't done that work.
Like I said, wells.
I mean, if he can do that.
And he can. He needs to, I go back to it.
But it would be a design system that could still provide the 1,000 PSI.
Through the fire department that it's going to.
For two hours.
Yeah. Does he have enough flow? All those, all those issues may be addressed.
Because right now, that part of the, that infrastructure still belongs to him.
Correct.
So he could.
I believe so, yeah.
So he could do that.
I do have a question on it. I don't know if you'd like on that.
So?
Trevor, Hope is here for, he can add to this if he'd like to, from Peterson Pipeline.
He's the president of Peterson Pipeline.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how we want to, how we want to.
I don't think Sarah must say anything wrong, but I believe that's his case.
If we're not following the ordinance that we require people, if we're applying all the other developers on the subdivision to regress that we need to do that here too. If that's the ordinance and that's how we've enforced it on everybody else, let's be consistent.
So where in this process, because I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding how this went, where it is, where in the process were they required to show that they had fire suppression and they declare who they were getting it from? Is there any point in this process where it's clear at concept, at preliminary, at final, where is it that they have to show who they're getting their water from?
At final plat? Well, at several points, at preliminary and at final, they show, and even at concept, they say where they're potentially going to get it. But at final plat, they say, we will provide it. And in their case, again, the timing was a little funky, so they couldn't say they had Peterson Pipeline. They decided to go with Wells, and that was going to be the system they were going for. But they had a caveat to, if Peterson Pipeline became available, they may go with them.
So?
They were going to do their own system.
Building permit, they should have had to show fire protection.
That's my question. At building permit, who are they showing fire protections with?
Did we get a?
Yeah, so during the building permit process, during the building permit process, we have forms that they, the applicants, the homeowners or contractors or whoever, filling out that building permit, they have to take a fire approval plan over to the fire department and have it signed off. We got those from the fire department for both building permits in Heather Meadows.
Okay, so what fire protection were they declaring?
Do we have a pump from the river?
It's my understanding, in my recollection, if I recall Dave sharing this with me, that it was our understanding that they were going to be able to use Peterson water as fire suppression, at least that's what we were told, we understood it was going to be able to. Peterson followed up with a letter after that stating that that is not their understanding and stuff, so we fell into a gap in there, and that's probably part of the issue.
So this is, this right here is what was turned in for the building permit. So, this is the fire protection plan approval, so they go through the, they're supposed to present their plans to the fire department. Again, I think like what Chuck said, it was under the impression that that fire system was charged and ready to go at this time, and that's why I believe Dave signed off on it. So they also do.
Yeah, but where does it say on there whether they're using the Wells or whether they're using?
It says it complies.
He thought that the fire hydrants were charged and they were getting it from Peterson Pipeline.
So is this their plan or do we have more to it? It's just the permit?
This is for the permit. This is all that is, I mean, we're trusting our fire officials, they were trusting the process that those systems were approved, and that's what was indicated on the plans, improvement plans, and through all of the reviews, and that's.
This says fire protection plan approval. Is there a fire protection plan? Or was it just word about this is what we're going to do, and then they sign the form?
I don't know. So.
I'm just remembering when I built a home, I had to write up a whole plan as to what I would do.
Right, we don't, we don't necessarily see that. The fire, the fire chief.
So maybe he got a copy of it and then just, he submitted this to you.
This is all that we require. And sometimes there's conditions, you have to have a sprinkler system, or you have to have a 5,000 gallon tank with a fire hose.
So, in a new subdivision with fire hydrants in it, do we ever test before we?
Before we do. So, the culinary water system actually passed off on the culinary water system, but again, all of that is documented. Our engineer, this is John from Wasatch Civil, he's actually done the inspections on this, and it's well documented, the whole process, in fact, in his last review for conditional acceptance, he actually stated this still needs to be resolved over fire hydrants.
So, so in your inspection, you didn't see fire protection present?
Initially, I assumed there was because they had installed the water system and everything, and then, and then I found out they were dry later on. Initially, I assumed it was charged and ready to go, but that's what it shows on their plans, is they're connecting, so.
Well, again, I'd say a stop work. Obviously, something broke down in that process somewhere with them, and they probably thought they had it in California or something.
So moving forward, do we need to put into code somewhere in this process that at a new subdivision, there is a test of fire hydrants to, for sufficient flow?
And typically, we do that. Again, this one has been jumbled around quite a bit for months now, and we got kind of between it.
I wonder if it's necessarily a code issue or just a procedural issue? In your procedures, there's a physical test rather than.
It's a procedural issue for us to be able to demonstrate that hydrants provide the fire flow that's needed.
Because I see that form, and it's declaring that the system is there, it's functioning, and we didn't physically do the test, and that's kind of.
How do we know?
So I would still say.
And I.
I would think, and I'm going to look at the attorney, I would think if we're certifying that they have fire, and then something happens and they don't.
Well, I do know that at the one point, Dave went out and did flow these that are on Peterson's line, and we had plenty of fire flow on that, but that was our understanding that that was going to be, you know, distances and everything worked that that could provide the needed fire flow, but then there was a difference of opinion between the developer and the water company.
We don't have a will serve from Peterson water.
You actually.
Oh, you do now?
We do, we have several different letters going back and forth. They initially gave a will serve, or not necessarily a will serve, but it's in, it's in the, in the packet, but there initially was, but then they were, then there was just a lot of back and forth between the developer and the water company that, well, we can't provide, we don't have enough connections, we can't provide it. So, in our engineers' reviews, they requested a letter from the company, water company, by, to the developer stating that they could not get water services, and so therefore they went to Wells. So that's when it kind of transitioned.
But that's what it was approved on, was the Wells?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so like at preliminary, we probably had a weather.
Yes, so, right. When they first, when he first submitted his application, we had a will serve letter right along with all the other.
So they changed what it was approved on.
Correct.
They necessarily, they would need to prove that that new method of providing the fire protection should work. That's on the developer.
That's on the well.
Well, let's put it right there and get it settled with these people.
And the will serve letters, I know a lot of them will say, yeah, they're in our service district, we can provide service, subject to their compliance with the following requirements. And we need to pay attention to that because, I mean, sometimes it's, you pay, you provide the right, you provide the source, and you provide the storage, just for the water company I'm familiar with, you know, or you purchase the storage from us, or whatever it is, those requirements, I think those need to be, when we go from, that's fine, I think for preliminary, if they're there, but for finally, you need to make sure if they were conditions in that will serve level, that they've now been satisfied.
With the water company out there with, they have to have already made the purchase and be part of the water company before the will serve letter would be. It's not on condition that they purchase it, they must purchase it, otherwise they don't get.
So, what, because the one I'm familiar with, I'm not sure any of these are in place, so what are we doing as a county to rec, to make sure that these procedures are consistent and followed for our requirements for, for what is required?
Well, that's what, I mean, Lance and I talked, and that's what I'm saying, so you have Johnson's that's out in the middle of Milton, there's no water system around it, and that's what I asked Lance, is how did he mean the fire code protection plan? And to me, that's all Dave needs to do, is take that concept and apply it to his subdivision.
Well, but going forward, if you're looking at this for how we need to adjust code, how it should be consistent across the county regardless of which water company we're using, at this point of the process, you have a will serve letter, which means this, not, this company says a will serve means that they have the intent to service it sometime down the road if they add to their capacity, and this water company says will serve means we have the excess capacity and you, and you have purchased that capacity, and therefore you, somewhere between those two extremes, because we have those extremes in water companies right now, there should be a, a clarification in our code for what a will serve means and at what point of the process it's required, so that there's some sort of consistency.
So I think the standard is at concept, the others water supply. At preliminary, it's a will serve agreement, and at final, it's, the agreement is fulfilled and we're going to give them water.
So define, define that then. You just said for concept, because you've got a company that still has an extended capacity, and you've got, you've got concept coming up this Thursday in your planning commission meeting for a system that does not have capacity according to the state.
And at concept, all they have to do is say, we will get water from those guys.
And if they don't have any water at this point?
We don't.
Preliminary, they don't get preliminary.
Then preliminary is the next step up. Do you have a will serve agreement?
Okay, so.
At some point in there, Peterson Pipeline didn't have the capacity to serve it, and they switched. And I'm not exactly sure what that happened. They switched to well.
If we had known at concept or at preliminary that they did not have capacity to, to offer, then we wouldn't be in this mess now, correct?
Well, it's, you're right, that is correct, but, but development generally moves forward in those kinds of phases, and so if the developer, builder, whoever it is, is willing to take the risk with a company saying, yeah, we've got this scenario, they need to have a will serve letter, and at least by final, I'm willing to even talk about.
Preliminary is where, where it really hits the road. And that's where we have to have everything lined up that this is going to happen. It's very clear.
So there's not a house built until that is verified? Because you're just doing finals.
Preliminary plan is planned, but we're not going to sign off on the final plat until this stuff is.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. At final, that's when you know everything's working and they can start building houses.
Okay, so at any time, did we have, did you as the planning department have a letter from Peterson Pipeline stating that they were going to provide fire protection for Heather Meadows?
No.
If we don't have that, if we don't have that letter, it doesn't exist, then like Robert said, it goes back to their private wells. If they are not in compliance with the code on their private wells for fire protection, then yes, we need to stop and make them come into compliance. If they want to sit in battle with Peterson Water after it, that's their business.
Sounds like there would have been something, though, given to Dave to give this approval that we're looking at here, the fire protection plan approval.
Well, not that's a mess.
The file wanted that.
Maybe we need to look at that.
And he's out of town today, so.
Well, even with that, even, to me, you can look at that kind of step internally and make sure that procedurally, everything is okay. As far as what Lance thinks to do or to move forward, we have a non-compliant system, and until it's compliant, there shouldn't be a building going on. To me, that's a cut and dried decision as far as that goes, and we just move forward along those lines. Internally, you can look at your procedures and make sure they're sound, and if they are, and somebody just dropped the ball, then you deal with that, but I think you guys deal with that internally. I don't know whether you get involved.
Well, weeks ago, we were going to red tag it ourselves in that, same thing, we weren't going to get in the middle of the battle, but then we were told that the hydrant out on the street, you know, it satisfies and within our, our distances required, and so we held short on that, and that's when we received a letter from Peterson Water that that wasn't their understanding, and so that was that middle area that, that's what we.
So I would say.
We have to. Gets it.
Okay.
Thank you. Will do.
I'm going to come back, I'm sorry.
I know.
Do we just have to hang out?
I still think we have an issue on the, on the concept and who's providing water, because we had the same thing happen again with, who's that Paul trying to partner with over there on that piece of property?
Jeremy.
Yeah, so Jeremy, they were told that they had fire suppression and water available from Highlands when they're at a, they don't have capacity at all. Yeah, and it's the same system.
Part of the issue we ran into, though, when I was on the planning commission, I remember discussing this a lot, there are water companies who will not issue any type of a letter until you've paid for your connection, and the hard thing for that is that if you're a property developer, even just you're building one lot, right, one home, you don't necessarily want to shell out the money for that until you have some assurance that you're going to be able to use the connections that you purchase. So if I'm a developer and I'm developing 10 lots, I don't want to spend $150,000 in water connections until I have some assurance that I can develop the lots, right? So that's part of the issue, we got to figure out how to navigate.
That I understand, but is it calling it a intent to serve and defining what that is? Is it a will serve and defining what that is? Is it?
I think you're right, I think that's what needs to be clarified.
There needs to be some sort of process so that.
Is it intent to serve and then will serve, and what's the definition of that letter? Because you're right, different water companies.
Exactly.
I don't object to that clarification, and I would expect the water companies to be on this.
I would expect.
I think that there, I think Highlands is short on source, on storage. Do you think it's both?
According to the.
I thought, I thought.
I don't remember storage ever being an issue.
There's, there's nothing, but there's, yeah, it, I, I should.
In the discussion, we, we shut it down, there was only discussion on the source. There was 104% source capacity.
I got a text from a Damian Spillsbury. They are.
Oh, Damian, yeah.
They do the Yellowstone TV program, or they go around and it sounds like a series.
This is the.
Cole watches it faithfully, we know all about it.
Really? The Kevin Costner.
I don't watch it.
Oh, the yellow coster.
Yeah, but Cole watches it faithfully.
Haven't seen it.
Yeah.
Regular TV, YouTube.
According to the coach.
No, it's, it's.
All right. So he called, he wanted to know if they, we had any objections, because they've been trying to find, there's a part in the, in the deal that talks about rural community trying to find a birth certificate or something. They wanna use Stacy's office as part of their, to do one of their, part of their film.
Actually, they requested, Brenda, Stacy said, if Kevin's gonna be there, you're using my.
Can I request a huging scene? Do you think I could do a job in your office for him, Dave? I'm good at filing.
So they were talking about that one, possibly the DMV, they're looking at a couple up in Summit County. They would like to do either Friday or Saturday. They was excited when they found out we were closed on Saturday, or Friday.
I say, sweet, let them do it. They're gonna bring a bunch of people into town, and they're gonna spend money, and why not?
Make down the border, make down the jail cells down there that are certified.
Well, I'm just presenting, if you all have a problem with it, I'll call you back and say.
Thumbs up.
Where to go, 'cause they're gonna make a decision tomorrow on which facility that they are going to use.
Do we wanna be able to tell the governor, we supported the Utah Fire Commission?
They did guarantee that they're not gonna unhook any of your computers, change any of your settings.
So would we need to have someone here, though, during the filming process?
Okay, I'll volunteer.
I just.
It's funny that we've got lots of volunteers.
I have keys. We're good.
We would probably have to do some kind of a, take some security measure to make sure.
Yeah, like Stacy's office has a vault and stuff, and so.
Do we have to close that door in the vault?
We close that every night, huh?
Yep.
Okay. Do you volunteer?
Yes.
Okay.
Sign me up, please. I'll sit here all day. But the chance that he could be here works for me. Also, several other tabloids who I find fairly attractive, so even if one of them come over, I'm gonna.
The Sheriff's Department's been providing security around this a lot during all the filming and everything.
I will touch bases with Brian. If there's no problems, I'll let them know. And then talk to Jan about that. He said he sent you all a copy on that memorandum for Ty Eldridge. Right now, there's nothing. He's waiting to hear back from Brian.
I have an item when you're. Well, I just got on the phone with Kevin Costner. I'm sure that Sarah will probably take care of it for him. I think in the past, we've charged a small fee for use of the thing. Do we wanna go there? Do we even care?
I feel like for Kevin Costner, we should wait that.
Pretty much sure she'd figure it out.
As long as he, that they allow him to come here and hang out with me for the day, then yes, so she not give.
Sounds like there is no fee to this. We're good to move forward.
We might need just some form of agreement.
With just reliability, I'm sure they have a form that could be a good starting point. I'm happy to make myself available to help with that.
Well, I think.
Make sure you put that Sarah's here for that. There is a requirement.
All right. So if they come back and said, you wanna use this, then I'll make sure that they get in touch with you. Jan, is that right?
Absolutely.
As far as legalities of it?
Okay.
Okay. All right, Mike, anything, Mike?
What's that?
Sorry.
So we've talked about this a little bit several months ago, Taggart's Grill and their parking situation. And we met with UDOT to discuss where their no-go line was, and they determined that it is the fence slinners there. They were willing to deed the property, the road into Taggart's, which is currently in UDOT's name, to the county. We've been maintaining it anyway, so it's not, it's not us really taking on any additional resources. But Taggart's Grill would like to lease some property from the county along that road to provide additional parking. So I wanted to talk with you about that, see how you feel about that. It will need some site work.
Like some fill work? Is there a lot of fill work there?
There's some fill work that needs.
Taggart wants to use it on their side?
On the, on the opposite, well, on their side of the freeway, but on the opposite side of the road there, so between the freeway and the road.
Yeah, that's a lot of fill work.
They need to do some fill work there. My thought was, if we determine what we feel like is an appropriate yearly lease rate for that, and then we tell them, you do the fill work and the site work, and we'll just credit that towards the lease for however many years it takes to do that. What are your thoughts?
So how are they gonna increase their parking by, by filling in that area? Are they gonna?
I don't know if they're gonna. Well, they wanna go a little further up the road, 'cause right now, they do have parking along there, but it drops off at a certain point. And there is enough space there that they could create probably at least an additional 10 or 15, just moving up the road. Now, going out further, they might be able to go too deep. I don't know.
I was thinking if they, if they bring it up, they can put, they can bring it to a point where they can stripe it and have designated.
What are they hoping the county parks space?
That I don't know. And I don't know that they know at this point how many spots. But part of the discussion, you know, they've talked about, well, maybe we can pull some fill from the opposite side, from the hillside, and use that, which would create additional parking on both sides. I don't know.
It does make sense to go further up the road and create more spots that way.
I think they're gonna need more tables.
That's, this is what's holding up their expansion.
They're ready to do an expansion. He has plans for an expansion, but he can't do that until he has additional parking.
So right now, he, he said he did in July the same amount of business that he did the whole first year that he was open. They're turning people away. They've got people out in the parking lot.
I was gonna drive there, I'm like, no.
Yeah, and he says they have no idea how many people come through, look how full the parking lot is, and just move on. But until they can address the parking, they're really stuck in what they can do.
So I don't have any objection to moving forward on what you've talked about, but the one question I'll ask is, why are we crediting their costs to improve it against the lease rate?
My only thought was, if, if we're leasing them space that's otherwise unusable right now, and they're willing to put the cost to make it usable, down the road, that's usable space that we own. That makes sense.
I see your point. I don't necessarily.
And, and if you feel like we don't wanna do that, I'm okay with that, too. If, if we just wanna say, we'll lease it to you, you do the work.
They hired them to do all the improvements.
And that's fine if that's been the, the case. I don't, I don't have an issue with saying that.
I mean, I don't imagine our lease rate's gonna be particularly high.
I don't know how we could charge very much for it.
You'd be essentially, I think, saying that you have it free for a period of years, maybe decades.
So maybe we don't, maybe, maybe we credit the first year and say, after that, it's on you. Maybe we don't credit it at all. Maybe we just say, this is the lease rate, and you do all the site work.
So how does, how does that affect the property owners across the street? I mean, I don't know how far.
Far up the, farther up the road.
They own that, the road, they own the house?
That's what, that's what his recommendation is, that after a certain point, we put a no parking sign, which frees up, 'cause right now, people are just parking wherever. If he can, if he has the expanded parking capacity, he can put a no parking pass this point, which would relieve the pressure on the homeowners farther up the road.
I think putting, allowing more parking will relieve the pressure.
Is he homeowner?
He owns the, the first one there, and that's where his employees are parking now, is on that.
Development reason why we would do the credit? I, I just didn't know if anybody could answer.
I don't know. And I don't know what the lease rate would be, so I don't know if it'd be worth even investigating that. But in the end, we just need to decide if we're agreeable, that we're willing to lease that property, and then decide, you know, the details as to what that's gonna cost. And we'll have to negotiate that a little bit, perhaps, and then the improvements. I mean, I feel like the county certainly can't say, well, we're gonna do the improvements. That's a lot of work and a lot of money. But if he's willing to do the improvements, you know, and there's some benefit, there's certainly an economic benefit to allowing them more parking so they can expand their business. You know, if he's doing more now in a month than he's done in a year, well, that's great. We're reaping the benefits of that, too.
Well, if, if the county does the improvements, then you could increase your.
Well, that's an option. I guess we could look at that and say, we'll do the improvements, but we're gonna charge you, you know, so much.
So if we wanna do the improvements, I wrote $10,000 into the bear grant for tourism on the Taggart's exit. So if we want to have the county do the work, and then we use the $10,000 for the materials, or we ask Steve for the materials, I don't know which way we go on it, but we have that, that requirement is that it is for an economic development tourism purpose. So something that improves our ability to collect revenue off of that.
So I'm just looking at this and trying to put some other business in the same set of shoes and wondering if we would treat them the same way. Why, why are we looking at Taggart's and saying, we're willing to pay money out of the county because you need to expand? 'Cause in other areas, if a business was to expand beyond its capacity that it received its business license on, we would tell them they would have to relocate to a place that they can expand. We wouldn't go in and purchase property or make deals. And this is just odd to me, why this business is getting special treatment instead of being treated like any other business that came in, according to our business.
I don't think we're, we're not purchasing property, and I'm not suggesting that we spend the money out of the county coffers.
Well, you have a recreation hotspot that's going to be used whether or not we do anything with it or not.
Taggart's, the, the takeout at the river, to me, is a non-issue. This is a business looking to expand and using, I've heard it said that we've, we're talking about using county dollars to expand that road and that parking. You mentioned that we could do that and figure that into some kind of a lease. I look at it, if, if that's our road and we allow parking on that road, then we allow parking, we don't charge a lease for it. But I don't understand why we would put money into something to expand a business if we're not gonna do that for everybody that needs a business expanded.
You, you have, you have a business that, in order for them to expand, for us to reap the benefit of their expansion, we can do something to facilitate that? I, that's a unique set of standards that if you had any business in that situation in the county, especially in, in an environment where we're losing commercial investment exponentially over.
Commercial investment. We're beating businesses all the time.
The numbers, the numbers don't reflect that.
I would look at this, if, if that business owner, the business owner approached us as a council and said, I would like to use more, you know, the county's road is not sufficient for the amount of parking that we need for the businesses in this area. We're willing to pay to expand that parking for the county. I would be willing to have that discussion.
That's what he's done. That's exactly what he's done.
Okay, that, that's just not what we're discussing right here. At least, that's not what I'm getting.
Well, I, I think it is. I, I was throwing that out as, you know, trying to, to make something work. I'm not suggesting we spend money out of the county coffers. I never suggested that. I said, if we do something like this, we could say, you do the work and we'll credit you on a lease if we're going to do a lease. We could do what you suggest and say, you do the work and you use it, and we're not gonna charge you a lease. That's fine with me, too. I, I don't see this as a moneymaker for the county.
No way.
But I also don't see it as a, as a place where we need to be spending money.
And if it's just me, I'm one of seven, you guys can't tell me to shut up. But I would say if that's what, that the county allows parking right there, if he's willing to expand that at his cost, I say there's no lease or anything involved. It's just county parking. What I see with the lease is now he's got a claim towards, to a property right, and now he starts dictating who can and can't park on county property. If that's the direction we wanna go, then we need to have a completely different conversation.
But this is part of the justification, and UDOT being willing to do it, was the economic development portion of it, and them being willing to sign it over.
Well, we'd still have the, even if we do what he suggests, we still have the economic development benefit of it. Whether Taggart's has a claim to it or not, they do just by nature of where it's located. I mean.
Why would they do the work if they wouldn't have the ability to use it?
Because they're the only business.
Because they're the only business there. They would have the ability.
But right now, you have, but right now, you have, have people going on the river who are coming over and parking there, too, depending on the Saturday and the amount of.
You may have.
You have people coming over. That's why he's.
And for that, I mean, I don't.
That's what I'm saying. Now, what you're talking about now is that you're trying to tie up county property for the specific use of one person. That's a completely different discussion.
He does the work on it.
That's a different discussion, in my opinion. You're, you're trying to say, we want to tie up this county property and only allow one business to have access. No other members of the community or the public are allowed to use that unless it is for that purpose.
But that's what we've done with barefoot.
That's a different discussion that we have.
That's what we've done with barefoot tubing, is we've allowed them to use.
Correct. I'm not saying you can't do it. I'm saying it's a different discussion.
That's, and that's what you suggested.
So maybe what we need to decide is, or maybe, maybe this is a conversation to have with the business owner, does he want to have exclusive use of that property? Or is he fine with, with us just saying that's county property? We don't care if you park on it. We won't charge you a lease. You do the work to improve it. Or does he want exclusive access or exclusive use of it? And if he does, okay, then let's talk a lease.
Yeah, I think you need to bring local property owners into that discussion also, 'cause they'll be affected by that.
Sure.
But then come and have their, say, their day at the day, because they're gonna come and ask for it after the fact if you don't.
Yeah, there's probably a public process that we have to follow in order to lease the properties. So that's the discussion, I guess, that we need to have with, with Steve. Ultimately, though, what I wanted out of this discussion tonight is, are we agreeable that we're okay proceeding with something there?
I'm agreeing with him.
Okay. And then the next step, I think, is sit down with him, say, okay, here's some options. What do you prefer? And depending on what he decides, we can come back and discuss that here and say, okay, now we go with Route A or Route B, whatever that may be, and then take the next steps. Everybody okay with that? Okay, perfect.
So for everybody's information on, are we moving through the agenda, portfolio assignments?
Six sixteen and thirty-one seconds.
So. I discussed with everybody individually that, that the company that was hosting the tourism website wanted the $600 to maintain it. The chamber is, has taken that on for the $600, so they've moved, they're moving it and are willing to maintain it for that. Anyone speak now, or?
That's what we're talking about. We have to maintain it for.
So we were not getting any response back from Aristotle on it, so Mauricio went ahead and moved it over to another platform. I think that's ready to go. Well, they got $500 for getting it ready to go out of, and then the $600 to maintain it for the year. And then I talked to Stuart Clayson today. Apparently, Roland, you asked him not to come?
Uh, no.
That's not what he indicated in his email or in our phone conversation today.
No. So the conversation was, he was on the agenda. I called to see what he was doing. He said that he does the CRE, RDA stuff. I'm like, okay, but has county council gonna talk to you? And he said Tina did. I'm like, okay, you're on our agenda. He said, I don't wanna be on an agenda. He said, I just wanna have a discussion. I said, then we need to do it during the work session. But okay, he said he couldn't come today. He wants to come on the third.
So I'll, I can go ahead and forward the email that he sent back in the clarification.
I have one.
However, I, this is something that UAC provides. He works for UAC, which we are a member of, and this gives the county the ability to have a third party who can assess the situation and be a tool for the county. So I feel like it's appropriate for it to be in a regular session, because this is a presentation. It doesn't go to a, you can't decide whether or not you, you will use their services or want them to use the services if you're doing it in a work session. And if this is the direction we are going, the reason I have him on now, is if the developer is coming back with a proposal, and this is a, a tool for the county to use to assess whether or not this is a good deal for us, we would like that to be in place prior to that proposal coming back from the developer. It, this is a service they provide to all of the counties. This is his expertise, and this was the ability for us to be able to assess whether or not it is a tool that we needed or we could benefit from using, from UAC.
Tina, would that show up in, would that be appropriate for our agenda as opposed to a council?
No, because we're, we, it, it would be if we decide to go with their services, that we have not decided to use them as a consultant or the. we have not decided to use them as a consultant for the RDA. This is a proposal of, this is the service they provide. This is why they provide it. This is how they're charged for it.
How we're charged for it.
How we're charged for it, or whether or not it can be taken through the RDA and part of the, um, management fees of the RDA. But until you decide that, it's not appropriate to have it in an RDA meeting because they're not.
Who would make that decision? The council or the RDA?
Theoretically, you're the same body, so.
I understand. But say we weren't the same body, who would make that decision?
I don't know, because it's the only thing that I've ever heard of in my.
Is the council that is a member of UAC.
But if he didn't want to come today, then.
So was there a?
He was on the agenda for today. We had talked two weeks ago about him coming back. It was in my follow-up with him overcoming today that I was told that the chair had asked him not to come.
No, that's not true. He's scheduled for, he's scheduled for the third, for a work session, so we can sit on the day we're coming.
So let me, let me ask a question with regard to that. Will there be a proposal that will be asked to accept?
I.
Or is this just a general discussion and then we'll ask for a proposal?
I think that there is a proposal, I think it's a discussion decision over whether or not we use their services. That's the regular move.
No, that's not what he explained to me. Explained to me, takes the RDA that we have, he evaluates it, and he determines if it is useful for the county.
That's if we, if we use their services, he does. But right now, we have to decide if we're using their services.
Meaning whether the, if the RDA is useful for the county?
Yes. He's an independent.
Well, we've already formed the RDA, so.
Well, he's talking about the proposal.
You mean, a specific, whether he would evaluate a specific proposal?
Rule and proposal.
Do we have a current proposal?
No, and so this is.
We have the old one, not a current one, right?
And that's what I'm telling you. This is, and in general, this is the service that they provide.
If it's in general, if it's appropriate for the work session, but if it were a contract for you to sign it, you would bother with any?
I think it's a discussion, that's what I'm saying. I think it's a discussion decision. Is this a service we would like to?
To even solicit a proposal with respect to?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's, I have explained to me, so. He'll be here on the third, at 5:30.
If you decide to do that work session.
He's asking in the email if we want him in the work session or not. I have not responded because I think it's more appropriate to have it in the regular session so you can have a decision made if you want to make a decision. You can say no decision, but you can't do it in a.
I guess I'm lost because why you don't have your discussion in the work session, and then if you want to discuss whether or not to use the service, you have that as an agenda.
Because that would be two different things.
But if he tells you, he doesn't want to do a presentation, he wants to have a discussion, that would be a work session. And then if we are thinking we may want to use him, that would be a decision, so that would be an agenda.
Which is why I had him on.
So we could do, we could have him on both.
Okay. Why don't we do that? Why don't we have him at the work session and have it also as an agenda item for a decision?
Then can we have him at the very first so we're not keeping him here?
Yeah. You got it.
I have one question for the airport. Are we through pulling the road base material from there for the purpose of the county fairground? Because if we are, they have some ideas of where they could use it.
Are we, are we going to get that road base off, or the millings off Highway 66?
Don't know yet. Haven't, haven't got it.
So that's, that's where it's, we're not, we get those, then that'll be a closer haul to the fairgrounds and we can do.
So you still need some of the material at the fairgrounds?
We do, we need a lot at the fairgrounds.
Okay, okay.
We're still working on.
If, if you get it, then they have some ideas where they could use it at the airport.
Which will be no problem.
Which I'd like some of from.
Yeah, we understand absolutely. Because we don't want to pay the hauler if we don't, just to store somewhere else.
Sure.
We should do that. The tailings, spread it out.
We're taking Morgan Valley Drive's tailings though, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but it's not as much as, like Highway 66 as a whole redo, so it'll be a lot more.
And I didn't have it in time, but next, next agenda I will have their recommendation for the vacant seat on the airport advisory board.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, yeah.
Got four minutes.
Sweet.
Six minutes.
Tell me when you see the soundbar.
The YCC golf tournament is on Thursday.
I follow the advice.
Being enforced.
I don't like players or you don't want to do this one.
I'm just not making it up. It's an embarrassment.
Got it. I can relate to that.
Whenever you can, if you've got time, you tell me what your schedule is. I'll just be there because I don't need like.
I'm somebody with you.
That's not the one, let me know.
So we start by your clock? We start by that. You were late.
Yeah, both of you, you're late on both of them. So it really doesn't matter. No matter what, you're late.
Hi, you ready or here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you ready or here?
Makes sense. I'm ready, sir. Thank you.
Maybe both. Ready?
Especially given the amount of events.
I want to welcome you all to our county council meeting this evening. We'll start with a prayer and a pledge. I will offer that, and then we'll go from there.
Our county eternal heavenly father, we come before thee this evening to thank thee for many blessings. We're grateful for the opportunity to live in this beautiful valley which we have, for the safety and protection which thou stills upon us. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve, and pray we will be mindful of the citizens of this community. Very grateful for all that thou blessed us with. Be with us and protect us, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Just got one, a couple of things on the agenda. One, we need to move the approval minutes down to the bottom. And two, item number three has been moved to the third of September. So with those two, a motion on the agenda. If there's anything else.
Second.
My member Kilmer. Second my member McConnell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Conflicts of interest with any members of the council on any of the agenda items? None? All right, now we're gonna go into public comment. If you have any issues, concerns, you'd like to voice your opinion to the council, now is your time. This is not a two-way dialogue, so... The time is yours. All right, if there's none, we're gonna go out of public comment. Number one. Lynn Patterson. Right over there, please.
Well, I'd like to thank you for your time this evening, and I'm here just really quick. We went through the permit process down at Heinz Country Store, and in working with Gina, they were very helpful. We didn't know that we would need a permit, or didn't think we needed a permit, and our contractor concurred that we didn't need a permit. And so when we received the stop order, we were kinda surprised. And I called Gina, and she was very wonderful to work with. And I came up, and they helped me out a little bit, because the first time I received my bill for the permit, I was a little bit shocked. It was about $800. So they were able to work with me, and we got it down to a sufficient level. But they did tell me that the fine for starting without a permit needed to come before the council and see if that could be waived. So what happens, which I'm sure you know, is that the permit is doubled because we started work without a permit. And so I'm just here to politely ask the council if that can be waived for my permit price on that. Because it wasn't that we were trying to get away with something. We're a store, there's no way we could get away with something. We truly felt that there was no permit needed, and it was determined that it was.
So how much of the 361 is your total?
Um, four, yeah, with the $50. It's 411 altogether. So 153 is a double charge. 153 should be the permit price, and then 153 for starting without a permit.
Okay, so you're asking for the 153.25?
Yes.
To be removed.
For the money, and also, I did wanna come to the council and make sure that you knew that we weren't trying to... We enjoy being part of the community, and we don't want anybody to think that we're trying to do something illegal.
Okay, anything else? Any questions, council?
Should I make a motion that we refund that?
I do have one question. 53.25. I don't object. So I'm just reading this. So the building permit says 153.25, and then there's a subtotal to which the other items are added. So 252, oh, plus the 153.
Yeah.
Less the $50.
I noticed that on the actual permit, it doesn't show, it was, it doesn't show on the actual permit where it shows 153 is the permit charge, a 153 is charged for starting without a permit. I'm not sure why that doesn't show it on here, but you can see that the balance equals that that is there.
Okay, sorry.
Motion, member Kilmer, again.
To refund the 153.25 penalty fee.
Okay, most member Kilmer, second my member McConnell. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
She has biscuits and gravy on Saturday. I drive 10 miles every Saturday. So I had a conflict of interest. I'm glad you didn't need to worry about it.
Several months ago, planning staff and the planning commission were directed to look into a flag lot ordinance by the council to see if there was an opportunity there or something we wanted to pursue. Planning staff looked at a lot of other ordinances and how they worked in other jurisdictions, put together some proposals for discussions, and we discussed it at a couple different planning commission meetings. The planning commission was very thorough and had some good discussions, but essentially it came back to that we're not sure that this is gonna be a huge benefit to the county, and didn't see where it would be terribly applicable. And they felt that we didn't need to pursue it as a, at this time. But as, but they wanted us to come back to you and let you report that back to you. So that's what we're doing. I don't know, I stand for any questions, I know.
So I have a few questions, and I'll separate it for purposes of the discussion. So the request, under the memorandum, is the Morgan County Council requested the planning commission to draft a flag lot ordinance. And what we've been told is, we don't want to, we don't think you need it. And so, setting it aside, the merits of a flag lot ordinance in particular, I wanted to have a discussion as to whether that's an appropriate response from the planning commission. If the request was, evaluate whether or not we should have ordinance X, and let us know what you think, then the response would be appropriate. If the direction from the council is, prepare and draft an ordinance for our consideration, then it seems to me this is an inappropriate response. And I think we need to be clear, in terms of moving forward, how we interact with the planning commission on these issues.
Fair point.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I've had, being on the planning commission, there's been times when we've had to redirect to that and say, you know, whether you agree with this or not, the directive from the county is... We had that discussion many times when it came to the commercial use table, because there was a lot of discussion as to, Debbie remembers probably me saying this many times, whether you agree with it or not is irrelevant, because the direction from the council was to review this and make a, you know, a suggestion. So I would agree with you, if the direction is to draft something, I would hope that that's what they would do, and not just say... That being said, their draft might be a draft that this is what it could be, and they could still accompany it with...
We don't recommend...
We don't recommend this, but here's our draft.
That would be an appropriate response, because then I can say, well, let me look at the reasons why. But to just say, from a policy perspective, we don't think that the county needs this ordinance, they seem to be stepping into the legislative role, as opposed to the planning commission role as a recommending body for purposes of advancing an ordinance.
Question, just for clarification, 'cause I wanna make sure I understand. My recollection of the discussion was that you wanted us to look at it. Help me out, did we specifically say we wanted them to draft something to look at? Or did we just say we wanted to look at a flag? I don't remember exactly what was decided. And I know a lot of times, direction to the planning commission is a nod around the table, rather than a motion that you can go back and verify.
Yeah, it could be a mistake in the way we presented it to them, and so... But the way that the staff articulated it, I believe, is the way is consistent, is consistent with the request.
Yeah, see, and I, I'm with member Kimber, I thought we told them just to look at it, not necessarily give us a draft. I know that's what it says on the request, request planning commission to draft a flag lot ordinance. I thought we just directed them, look at it, see if it's gonna be feasible or not, and let us know what you think. That was my understanding of what we told the planning commission to do. I understand where you're, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, no, I, right.
And I agree entirely with what you're saying about being clear. I, absolutely, we have to make sure we're clear. I just can't remember.
Oh, yeah, finally.
So frankly, I went back and tried to find it in the minutes, and I couldn't find it.
I think we need to be more clear in our motions.
I almost think, in my memory, that it was one of those nods around the table, rather than a motion.
I know, and I, in response to it, I actually sent them a draft flag lot ordinance. So I know in my mind, I was thinking, yeah, we were gonna have them look and evaluate an ordinance. The staff then took and put other things together. I don't know if they used anything that I presented or gave to them. They may have used some of it, then they pulled from other places to put a kind of a compilation of things for the planning commission to consider. I didn't go back to the planning commission minutes to see how the staff presented it to the... And maybe you have a recollection of what we asked you to do.
Well, and I thought it was more general nature, as I'm looking at that request, I don't know if I summarized that correctly, I thought it was to look at and examine it and see if it's something to do, and, you know, then present it if they wanted to draft an ordinance. But as the planning commission discussed it, as I said, the pros and cons, the good and the bad, worldly, they didn't wanna take the time to finalize that draft, just give it up to you. Their recommendation would have been not to adopt it. But I can go back and look and see.
Well, I know that...
The version of yours, we modified it a little bit, and then some other examples of other mine books for their discussion, just kinda along the line, discussion of the topic.
Okay. All right, so we just need to work on clarification, and the reason I say that is likewise, when we was doing plans and planning commission, the council did direct us specifically, you will do this ordinance, even though we bucked the system, we did the ordinance, we'd done exactly what they told us, and we sent them in, you know. But like I said, I was under the impression that we just look at it, if you think it's feasible, let us know, if you don't, let us know also.
So I guess what we can do is go back and listen to see. I'm willing to correct it on my end if the direction wasn't clear, 'cause it's fair to the planning commission to receive clear direction from us. So I'll go back and listen to that. And then, I don't know if you wanna discuss the merits of a flag lot ordinance in the planning commission discussion, because, I mean, I'm happy to go through and talk about and discuss those, their various objections. But why don't I do this? Why don't I go back and try and find at least the transcript or the recording, so we can see whether or not the instruction was clear? And then, I would like to address the merits, I mean, in part, that's what makes it hard. I would like to address the respective merits of a flag lot ordinance, but I need the recommendation as to a particular text to have that discussion about. And what we got back was, we're not gonna submit any text because we don't think you need it. And if...
So my safe to say, based on what I read here, and your experience and yours from being there, is it a situation where the planning commission was really hesitant to spend the kind of time it would take to draft an ordinance just to have, for us to have a discussion about? Did they not?
A little bit. I think they were a little, they, I think there was a lot of discussion about what would this accomplish, and why are we doing this? And is this the right step? And they really didn't get much past that into, well, here's the merits of, if we were going to do it, here's what we would put into it. Is that your recollection as well?
Yeah, I don't, they did, they did discuss it at least two different hearings, so they spent some time. The first time they actually went down through the text, the proposed ordinance, and made some specific recommendations, and then it came back, and then there was, the discussion was more general, well, what does this allow? What does it accomplish? Do we create more problems? I think frankly, some of their positions are unwarranted in the law, and from practical concerns, I think they're decidedly overstated and over-concerned. And I also think with specificity in the ordinance, the relative parade of horribles laid out with respect to the flag lot ordinance could be easily addressed. For example, one of their big concerns is, is this going to be applied on a countywide basis? Not necessarily. You can make a recommendation as to what zones where it would be applicable and where it wouldn't be applicable. That would be a worthwhile recommendation. I'd appreciate knowing what zones they want it to be applied to. There's an objection, well, this may allow more development lots on the same amount of property. Well, obviously, yes, that is the purpose of a flag lot ordinance, but it wouldn't be inconsistent with the zoning. In other words, the flag, at least as I proposed it, the flag lot ordinance only allowed an additional lot to be created if there was sufficient square footage to meet the requirements of the zone with respect to lot size. So, you know, some of those kinds of issues, there was one planning commissioner member who said, I think people buy a property and they ought to just stick with what it was when they bought the property. That has, from my perspective, constitutional weakness, and isn't, and if you follow it to its logical conclusion, we would never change any zoning in response to public health, safety, and welfare. So there's a lot of those issues that I'm willing to address and see if I can engage the members of the council on for purposes of moving something forward and having a discussion on it. But it makes it really difficult if what I get back is, no, we've decided you don't need it.
Okay, well, because I've been there, and I think, I don't know if Mike will concur or not, to say the planning commission takes items lightly, you know, if that's what you're implementing, no, they don't. The planning commission spends a lot of time, a lot of discussion amongst themselves, pros and cons, you get, you know, right hand, left hand, they spend a lot of time, so...
I agree with that 100%, and I'm not suggesting that they took it lightly. What I'm suggesting is that I think with respect to the objections I heard them raise, there are significant counter-arguments to help address those issues. They may or may not prevail in terms of the overall council, you know? You may, the council may ultimately decide, no, we think the planning commission's right. We don't need a flag lot ordinance. I understand that. I just think it's more helpful to the council to have a recommendation from the planning commission, even if it's, this is the best we could do, we don't recommend it, but this is the best we could do. So... But I don't mean to suggest that they don't take matters seriously at all.
Okay, well, 'cause I'm looking at this thing, I feel they've done exactly what we asked them to do, and that was to look at it, see if it was feasible or not. To me, they're saying, no, it's not feasible.
Fee, okay.
But if you wanna, I mean, if you wanna address it, then, I mean, look into it, and we'll... I mean, 'cause Lance and I talked about this as far as, you know, discussion decision, it would've been more of an information thing, you know? If you wanna look into it and bring it back?
Well, let me ask this question, if it's a feasibility issue, so I guess this is more to you, Jan. We've got, in order to move forward on an ordinance, we need to have a recommendation from the planning commission. It can be positive or negative, but we need to have a recommendation. If this is a negative recommendation, and I wanna discuss a specific ordinance, can I bring it myself?
I guess if they've had their shot at it, and they've at least gone through that protocol, and so you can bring it for discussion, yes?
Land use ordinance, wouldn't it have to go to the planning commission for the first public hearing, and then you for the second?
Well, that's the procedure I was trying to have followed. So I'll go back, I'll go back and I'll listen to the minutes. I'll listen to the recording. I couldn't find it in the minutes.
All right, we'll turn that over to member McConnell, and... What takes us to number four?
Brett, you're up.
Brett?
Okay, I come here to talk about striping Old Highway. You've seen all the fading, it's just about complete. We all was today, really. I propose that we stripe from Trappers Loop to Peterson Exchange, and my perspective is on the safety. Safety, I did give a bid on that, have you told them the price, or I need to tell them?
No, I didn't, I was waiting for those others to come in, and so...
I tell you, it's a tough bid to get right now on striping, I couldn't get any others. This bid comes from Parsons, striper is $12,252 to stripe it. And there, if you know what happened on Old Highway with the school road that come down, they, they're gonna pay for a portion of that, which is just the turn lanes. And my worry is that that's gonna be real confusing, you just have turn lane striped, two arrows, that'll be, nobody'll know what to do unless we finish that, you know? So I'm really worried about that. So the bid that Parsons gave you was $12,252 to stripe everything. If you notice, there's a double yellow line that the state left off on their easement right, that's a double yellow island, goes into the turn lanes, and then you can be a double yellow line all the way down, and then two white lines.
Well, it's double solid all the way from Trappers to Peterson?
Well, it'll have intermittent, where you can pass. It'll stop when you have intersections, but basically a double yellow line all the way down there, except for those intermittent parts.
Brett, how long does this striping last?
About three years, would be your average.
So, and then, do they, will there be a white stripe on the side to create any kind of bike lane, at least when there's enough?
No, not really a bike lane, it creates a shoulder, it creates a lane, creates a lane, not really a bike lane. You can't put the yellow, the double yellow line is out there on a white, you can't, you have to do it all, you, the code, you can't do one.
So is this just a budget item request, or is it?
It's a budget item.
Okay, 'cause we don't, I didn't think we had an objection to striping roads, but I wanted to make sure.
I get more complaints over the lack of striping over there since it faded than I get over anything else, because it's very difficult, especially as much traffic as there is.
So Brett, did you, have you looked at the distances and seen if there actually will be a passing lane in that? There's enough length to get a passing lane?
The school paid for that, they paid for two, for two turn lanes, so why?
I mean, from that point to the Peterson interchange?
What do you mean, a passing lane, like a...
I mean dotted lines, where people can pass.
That's why I clarified, yeah.
If it's, 'cause if it's double, then people need to understand that you don't pass, that's a violation, that's a moving violation.
I think most of it would be double, I haven't measured it, you know what I mean? We, if we get an okay, I've actually gotta do that.
See, that, that's when we... When...
Most of it's...
Maybe right in front of the church.
I just slow down.
I'd have to calculate it out and figure exactly the distance.
So when the county striped the roads before...
It'd be the same price, you know what I mean, if you wanna double it.
Sure. I'm just saying, when the county striped before, the most, the biggest complaints we got were the fact that there was no passing, because if there is a bike on that road, it is a moving violation if you pass that bike on a double yellow line. And people would do that, they'd get tickets, and then all of a sudden, everybody's upset. And so if there's not room for a passing lane, I think you need to take that into consideration.
If there's room for one, I'll measure it and see, it'd be right by the LDS church, they're, they'd be the only spark.
So...
So the sheriff was ticketing people for passing a biker?
The sheriff can ticket people for passing bikers, and that was a big deal in the state legislature right about that same time, so...
So will they ticket people for not putting their, for not taking their cars off the road during the winter so we can have a clean plow?
They do, 'cause Brett's people contact them, and they go in and ticket them.
So I wouldn't pass a vehicle on that road? I don't think they ever had, but I'm certain I've passed a bicycle.
Me too, I know I have.
One thing would help me on, as far as, as far as road maintenance, is if you have lines on there, if you noticed, I can shoulder that road, and it gets watered out quick, because people come down with no lines, and they go like this, you know? So traders and stuff, that happens on that road quite a bit, just because of the trader traffic. So that would help. But the reason that we, as far as a budget item, is we're getting close on our funds, on highway projects. So if you remember when we voted this project in, I think we're gonna do pretty good on keeping it under the $500,000, but our matching funds as far as these bridge projects, that's gonna take us over, and that's what we talked about when we was here before.
Yeah.
That's gonna take us over.
So did you transfer, did we transfer into his budget the half of the registration fee that can be used?
We voted to, whether the transfer's been made, I don't know.
So has he, has that been made available to you to use in your funds this year?
Yes, that's part of that $300,000.
It's part of the $300,000, yeah, that's, that's in, that 500 includes that $300,000.
Okay, well...
So this project will take most of that, with the striping.
I talked with Brett about, I'm not gonna lie, I'm against putting striping on roads. It ends up, I mean, it's three years, and everybody wants it again. Put that money somewhere else.
Well, the reason that I got concerned is from the new part of the road, you know what I mean, that's the reason that I'm like, okay, I've gotta do something. So I text Robert about it, I've got a price on it from Staker-Parsson, because on that new road, it's gonna be really confusing if you're gonna do something. And the problem you got is, since me and you talked Roland today, I got with Parsons, got with our striper, I said, how much to do half the road? Guess what he said? Same price. If he's gonna come out on Sunday, he's gonna do this road for us on Sunday because they're booked. I mean, everybody's booked, it's just crazy, the road, construction that's going on. He's gonna come out on Sunday and do it. He's in charge of same price.
Publicization.
Exactly. He has to bring, he has to bring his truck out and get it ready for yellow paint.
It's just as easy to go on down. So Roland, your objection is, because we have to spend it every three years, or is it the passing objection, or...
So I'm not, I'm not opposed, and that's what I told Brett, I'm not opposed to going from Trappers up to the school, and then, you know, to like where the, just before you start the rolling drainage, okay? But I look at this, we're in a rural community, the road, and if you can't see the road, you need to slow down. That's just my part, I mean, that's, that's my opinion, this is rural, I'm in, I guess...
In my job, I'm looking at a safety, we need to be safety conscious in this county. That's the main line, and I, and I agree with you on all small, like Silverleaf, you know, all the small roads, I really don't think it's a problem, but on our main lines, I think it's a good idea.
But it's not gonna, it's not gonna fix, you're talking about the shoulder problem, it's not gonna fix a shoulder problem.
No, it's gonna help it out, it's not gonna fix it.
I mean, we, we talked about it, I mean, the state has widened that covert down there at Mountain Green how many times, and people still cut that corner. It doesn't matter if there's paint there or not, they're cutting the corner, they're driving wherever they're going to drive.
Yeah.
You're not going to stop at all. I think you're, I think you would have, but just in my experience.
I agree with Brett. I mean, I disagree with Roland. I think it's on the main line that, I think, quite frankly, Roland, those views are outdated. I think on the main line, we should have...
But I agree that it's going to cost you money. Like in three years, it's going to cost you another $12,000. Let's say this, let's say the price stays the same. Three years on that section, you do it again, it's going to cost you another $12,000 to do it, but if you, if you budget it for that, split that out, that would cheapen that up every year.
We've been trying to budget to fix potholes. Now we've got a budget to do lines.
Brett, from a safety standpoint, I already expressed my concern with the passing. Do you believe it's safer to have cars crossing that W yellow line than it is not to have the W yellow line?
Well, it's against a lot across the W line.
But they will do it when there's a bike there. They are not going to go seven miles an hour behind that bike.
I think bikes are supposed to go the speed of traffic or not even be in the roadway. I'm pretty sure that's state code. I'd have to check that. So if a bike's going slower than traffic...
Now, if we could teach them to go single file, that would be...
I mean, I can't, I mean...
Good luck with that.
I can't go that fast. I can't go that fast.
I've not seen our site for that.
I haven't either.
I wouldn't be inclined to push a prosecution on that.
Yeah.
We don't prosecute bikers for going less than the speed of traffic, and I...
Thank you.
What about, what about not stopping at the stop sign?
I don't know if this is even a factor, but...
I mean, you know, the county really couldn't afford to do every road. They're probably using anyway on the small stuff, but the main line is all I'm talking about, you know?
This road is getting busier and busier all the time with the development that's over there.
That's our busiest spot.
Yeah.
From Trappers to Peterson Exchange. That's, that's our busiest road, right?
Yeah, it's the state road access coming from that direction over to Snow Basin. It's busy all of the time, whether it's...
I just got a loner car, and it detects those lines, and it shakes if you get close to them, so I don't know if that's, as cars get smarter, I don't know if it will do that without the...
Cars get smarter, we get to get stupider?
Yeah, exactly. It knows where the lines are for some reason.
To give you an idea on, like Morgan Valley Drive, that's, that's a, a grant job, right? That's actually going to start on Friday. That's in that UDOT job. I don't have any choice, right, as far as, it's in the job, whether we say, "Don't do it," I guess. I'm not even sure we can do that. They probably haven't heard of that, have they, Darrell?
No.
No.
They did not require that on the last grant we did.
Right, it's in the job, right? It's in the job. They'll do it if we want, you know what I mean?
Have you looked at getting a change order through Granite and see if they can do it for a, a different cost, or?
You talking about Morgan Valley Drive or Old Highway?
Talking about using the contract on Morgan Valley Drive to do a change order for Old Highway.
They, they don't cross over, it's different. Morgan Valley Drive, Morgan Valley Drive is a grant, a federally funded grant job. The Old Highway is our maintenance money.
So, in the end, it boils down to the money, right? Do we have it in the budget?
Well, like I said, we'll, we'll be okay on this project. What's going to take us over, our highway projects, is matching funds on our bridges, like the Stoddard Bridge, finishing paying for that. The Croydon Bridge and Morgan Valley Job, or Morgan Valley Drive are all, are all grant jobs, and so we have...
Croydon Bridge shouldn't come out this year, is right, though? Or will we have a little bit on the engineering now?
Yeah, we've got quite a bit on the engineering, and it was supposed to go this fall, but we're running into delays, so it's probably, we're probably not going to have to come next year.
But to answer your question, no, it's not in the public works budget. It would have to come out...
So the issue is, where do we get the money from if it's going to come from outside?
Which is why I brought it to the council, because it's, we don't have the money to spend.
We brought that up. We knew what had happened. It'd actually been, we spent less on it this year than I projected. Remember, I projected more. It's actually been less, but...
On the, the Old Highway project?
No, on the matching funds.
Oh, gotcha.
For these grants. We pay 6.7% on everything that we match on a federal grant, which is a great deal for the county.
Yeah.
We still have to pay that.
Okay, that motion, somewhere.
I would make the motion that the county provide the striping on this road.
Do we need clarification on where we're talking?
From...
From Trappers.
Trappers and to the Peterson exit.
Okay.
Do we need clarification as to where we're going to get the funds if we're going to do that? And we've got to say where it's going to be paid from?
Which bucket is Stacy taking this in?
Highway project.
So you're saying that you will go over with this project, you will go over?
Not with this project. This project will actually stay under, is with the matching funds is what's going to take us over with our other projects.
So are you asking me to clarify where you should get the money for the matching funds for the other projects or for this project? Because it doesn't sound like...
For striping the roads. The rest has been identified, and this is striping. We have to identify where...
So the, the striping was not in the original bid on this?
No.
Okay, do you have your little book?
But we're still under budget on this project, is what you're saying?
We're not under budget. We're under our highway funds, but we've got, you know, we've got that much in the funds, just, we're going to go over this year with our matching funds. We've got two different things coming out of it. Our matching funds, we've got this project.
And this is not a DNC road funded project. It comes out of the funding or the road fund. This is not of the general fund.
And that are the projects.
So I suggest it be something that you pull out of surplus revenue, so from your fund balance. It's just going to be an amount that you make out of your savings account.
So out of the fund balance.
That we'll ultimately have to make.
So how many transfers have we made out of that fund balance year-to-date?
What have we done to?
We haven't made any yet, but we'll, we'll have to put this one down as...
But it's ultimately going to be coming out of savings.
But the balance in our investment account year-to-date is 2.6 million?
Not the investment. This comes out of our...
I know, but it's coming out of the fund balance, but currently, in the investment fund, based on our last work session, there was 2.6 million in the Zion's Investment Account, correct?
What does that have to do with this discussion?
I would think that the safety of the community on road striping should be a priority.
But what does that have to do with the 2.1 million? That's restricted funds.
She's just saying the cash is available?
The cash is available.
I would disagree, because most of that fund is restricted funds. That's why it's there, that's why it's invested.
I would disagree with that assessment, but without Bonnie here, we won't clarify that today.
So where you kept, where you taking the funds?
Fund balance.
Okay. Which is basically going to be savings. Okay, most of my member can, to stripe Old Highway from Trappers Loop to Peterson, coming out of fund balance, basically savings. Have a second?
I'll second.
Second member of Valentine? Questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Aye. So just you and I? Okay. The last thing is minutes.
July 16th.
A second. I don't think I had anything on... The only thing, I have anything on the July 16th, so...
Anybody on July 16th?
So a motion to approve the July 16th minutes.
Second.
Second by Member McConnell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then the August 6th one, the only thing is on page, that I have, is on page five, Stacy. On Tina's motion, the second line, it says, "Expertise to review the proposal." That's, I'm pretty sure that's supposed to be "and" by the county council assigned, "and Chuck Tandy," instead of "to be formed." You see that?
To re, to review the proposal.
"To be formed by the county council." I think it's supposed to be, the way I got it is, it's "to review the proposal..."
Yes, I should be reviewing this.
...the medical professional, the review committee made up of the medical professionals with the expertise to review the proposal.
The proposal, "and" by the county council members assigned, "and Chuck Tandy."
Assigned to the portfolio, bike it out.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, on page three.
On the same one?
Yes, same minutes, yeah. Page three, the motion on the airport. It says, one, two, three, four, five lines down, "Their desire to move with their facility." Just strike the word "with." "Their desire to move the facility at the Morgan County Airport."
Okay, go.
Do you see that?
I do.
And then on page four, Lance Evans' discussion decision, third line, from the bottom of that paragraph, "A phasing plan identifies the four, F-O-U-R, not F-O-R-E."
Where, where are you at?
Um...
On which one?
Right here. Cottonwood's Phase 5A.
Right here.
We're using a golf tournament.
We were talking about a golf course. Anything else?
A second.
With that, I will move to approve the minutes for the August 6th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion by member, the sixth August minutes, motion by Member McConnell, second by Member Newton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and you opposed?